I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on a mission under God, in the visible liberty and justice for all.
All right, up next we have recognition, awards and memorials. Two zero two five dash nine three one is proclamation honoring Police Captain James B. Counsel Parker, would you like to take that?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Proclamation honoring Police Captain James Edward B. Whereas Captain James B began his dedicated service for the Town of Groton Police Department on September third nineteen ninety six and has served with distinction for over twenty-nine years. And whereas throughout his career, Captain B has held numerous critical roles, including task force officer, boat operator, accident reconstructionist, patrol sergeant appointed May two thousand seven, patrol lieutenant appointed August two thousand eight, marine unit supervisor, administrative lieutenant, and was promoted to the rank of captain on November fourth, two thousand twenty. And whereas Captain B has received numerous awards and letters of commendation and recognition of his excellently professionalism, commitment, and outstanding contribution to public safety. And whereas Captain B has led and advanced significant initiatives on behalf of the Town of Groton, most notably overseeing the police department's migration to the state of Connecticut's eight hundred megahertz radio system, making Groton the first municipal police department deploy this critical interoperable communications technology. And whereas he has also served with distinction as co-chair of the U.S. Coast Guard Port Security Group, enhancing maritime safety and agency coordination. And whereas, in addition to his law enforcement responsibilities, Captain B has served the town as director of the Groton Emergency Communications Center and as deputy emergency management director, strengthening the town's preparedness and response capabilities. And whereas Captain B has built and maintained strong collaborative relationships with regional and state partners, including the Groton Fire Officers Association, the Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, and numerous boards, commissions, and agencies, always representing the Town of Groton with integrity and dedication. And whereas Captain James B will retire from the Groton Police Department on October tenth, two thousand twenty-five, marking the conclusion of a career defined by service, leadership, and steadfast commitment to the safety and well-being of our community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Rachel Franco, Mayor of the Town of Groton, on behalf of the Town Council and citizens of Groton, do hereby express our heartfelt gratitude to Captain James B for his distinguished service and unwavering dedication, dated at Groton, Connecticut, the seventh day of October, two thousand twenty-five, signed by Mayor Rachel Franco.
Thank you. Up next, we have public hearings. There's nothing on the agenda. Up next is receipt of citizens' petitions, comments, and concerns. Receipt of citizens' petitions is the portion of the council meeting where the council welcomes comments from citizens. To address the council, please sign the sheet at the table at the front of the meeting room. Where you are recognized by the mayor, please approach the podium, clearly state your name and address, and speak into the microphone. Each presentation should be limited to two minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentations should be related to matters pertinent to Groton.
Any information?
Up first, Counsel Bordelon?
Can we take a vote to kind of reinstate the minutes that we used to use, that we really never had a formal vote on?
Is there a second? I don't hear a second. Thank you. Up first is John Goodrich.
I'm sorry, you said there was no second.
There's no second. Up first is now John Goodrich. I don't see them. Up next is Brian Nichols. Counsel Parker, you'll be doing the time?
Yes.
Thank you.
Brian Nichols, LTL Media, Austin, Massachusetts. On August fifth, approximately forty-eight minutes into the Groton Town Hall meeting, Mayor Rachel Franco addressed the room and, from Sean from Long Island on, as several citizens peacefully protested Sean's unlawful July eleventh arrest following the encounter with former Connecticut State Trooper Brian Fahey. During your remarks, Mayor Franco claimed that the councilwoman Jill Russ had discovered spit on her chair before sitting down. Mayor Franco then turned to the town manager, John Burt, and reminded him and the public that this chamber is being video and audio recorded, clearly implying that Sean and the people that showed up that day, his supporters, had spit on their chair. So I asked myself, if this alleged spitting chair incident truly occurred, why wasn't the meeting stopped immediately and launched a full investigation? Why wait forty-eight minutes into this meeting to make that announcement? So here's how smart I am. For weeks, I emailed you and John Burt to get an answer about the investigation. Neither of you responded to me. So I also saw no formal charges brought up in the media, the newspaper, during your council meetings. So I FOIA requested the Town Council recordings in this room, two hours before and two hours after, review the footage. And after reviewing the footage, in its entirety, the evidence has concluded at no time that Sean or anyone associated with him come into the secure area that you have gates here. The only two people that came into the area at that time was Town Manager John Burt and a Groton Police Officer, which they did not do anything as well. So let's be clear. The only individuals that accessed this area-
Thank you, your time has expired.
So I'm just gonna ask you-
Up next is Ian Thomas.
I'm gonna ask you today, will you formally apologize to Groton-
Up next is Ian Thomas.
-and to Sean from Long Island Audit and his supporters here today? Will you issue a statement-
I'm sorry, your time has expired.
...about the spitting chair incident?
Up next is Mr. Thomas.
That's what I thought.
Good evening, Ian Thomas, twenty-four, Jefferson Drive. Just to finish where I thought he was going with that comment, I think there are answers that are needed, as far as like what that accusation was all about and what any investigation revealed, as with many other things here. Long story short, the rule change was unjustly made as far as limiting time for public comment. The mayor does not have that authority to do that arbitrarily and unilaterally. The rule that was cited, five H, is not, has to do with only presentations that are done by town staff and developers. The rule that adjudicates public speaking time is eleven A, which clearly states and implies that it's a council vote that happens contemporaneously on the night of, and it is otherwise guaranteed to have five minutes for our public to speak, with no cap. Other thing I wanted to speak about tonight was I received a text message from a concerned citizen that contained a digital image that was an invitation for a town staff, a town employee party, to be held at a local club, at a local facility, and is gonna be hosted by Community Speaks Out. So I am concerned about this, that Community Speaks Out just received a lot of money from the town, through the town, and now they're hosting a town staff-only event. Is that what the money went to? We need an accounting.
Thank you, your time has expired.
My name is Genevieve Surf. I live at Sixth Pearl Street in Mystic. I'm here, I'm going to try to say everything I have to say in two minutes. I'm gonna start with a thing I find most pressing to say, which is that Mayor Franco, you have been a disgrace to the Town of Groton for the last two years, if not the last four or six, as long as you've been a town counselor. If I had a dollar for every person who asks me why you hate Counselor Bordelon so much, I'd be rich. Your personal animosity toward her has been not only painful to watch, but embarrassing to us as citizens, that you cannot control your emotions any better than you have, and you have ruined practically every single town meeting with these animosities towards Portia. Now I'd like to say something about Portia Bordelon. She's become a good friend of mine. I admire her. I admire her courage. I admire her intelligence at going through the packets really well, which most of you don't, because all you ever do is agree with each other. You don't ever discuss anything that's in the packet. When Counselor Bordelon was in a committee with Counselor McBride for the School Property Reuse Committee, which I think met for, what did you meet, for about a year at least, to come up with this plan? There were altogether, you know, ten, twelve people in this committee. Counselor Bordelon never had to raise her voice once, or get defensive, or call a point of order, or a point of information, or anything. You know why? Because Counselor McBride was respectful toward her. Counselor McBride treated her like a real person, like an intelligent peer. You have never done that.
Thank you, your time has expired.
You are as bad as the leader of this country-
Thank you. Up next is the Long Island Audit. Thank you, your time has expired.
-who is trying to repress democracy by repressing speech. You are as dangerous-
Up next is the Long Island Audit.
-as the Republicans in this country trying to take away our democracy.
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Good evening. Hope you all didn't think I forgot about the Town of Groton. Definitely not. I know my time tonight is limited unconstitutionally and unlawfully by Mayor Rachel Franco to two minutes, so I'll be brief. Mayor Franco, I still have not heard back from you or the town attorney regarding my recent demand letter. You can expect to be served with a federal lawsuit complaint shortly, whether that's your home, grocery store, wherever you might be, or we can work out a way you can come here and get it, but that will be happening shortly. And while we're here, let me share some good news. The absurd felony voyeurism charge that your police department tried to pin on me and my cameraman has been dismissed completely. That's what happens when you weaponize the law against citizens exercising their constitutional rights. Now, Town Manager Burt, what's the status of the internal affairs investigation into the Groton Police Department? Unlawful arrest, retaliatory arrest? It's been almost three months now, Mr. Burt. As a town manager, do you not oversee and work for the Town Council? Have any of you bothered to ask Mr. Burt, what's the update on the internal affairs investigation? The Connecticut State Police had one out within weeks, albeit with a bunch of false statements. My cameraman had a hood and a mask, then I edited out all the no trespassing signs. So I would appreciate an update on that, Mr. Burt. And better yet, why was the police department body camera footage doctored when released to the public? You guys preach about transparency, but the audio between former disgraced Sergeant Fahey, the psychopath, the mayor's friend's husband, was muted. So where's the transparency? Nothing the Groton Police Department has said to Brian Fahey was ever recorded, apparently, or it was doctored and removed out of the body camera footage. So I think that's an disgrace. What do you have to hide? A conspiracy to violate my constitutional rights, perhaps? It's ridiculous. John Burt, as a town manager, you should know the answer, and let me be clear, I will not let this go.
Thank you, your time has expired.
We will not let this go.
Up next-
I will hold the Town of Groton and its police department fully accountable-
Thank you.
-for their actions.
Your time has expired. Up next is Scalzo.
I don't know how you recall that time.
My name is Scalzo. And my name is Scalzo, my contact information is at scalzofoto.com. There's so many things I want to speak about, but the quote I like is, honest people have conversations, deceptive people run and hide, deceptive people shut down conversations and communication. When you limit time to two minutes and shut it off at thirty minutes, you're basically saying that you can't stand behind your words or your ideas. You can't stand up to scrutiny. And what the gentleman from, no, LTL Media, he did a whole presentation on his channel about Counselor Rusk, and it's a little more, we've confirmed the, there was no spit, no one spit, but there was some other shenanigans, and I believe Counselor Rusk lied on purpose about it. You can see as you zoom in with the camera, there's nothing on the handle of the chair. Counselor Rusk pushes her hand on the handle, now all of a sudden there's a substance there from what I can see, and then she goes and whispers to Dictator Franco about it, and it's clear that she's lying about the spit. Now why would you adopt our issue? That we're the ones that have the problem with people spitting? You tried to hijack that for some reason. I have about three more minutes of things to say, but I have thirty-two seconds to say. Yeah, shutting down the time is wrong, and I think that, yeah, I would like to know why Counselor Rusk did that. Mayor Franco is an extreme narcissist. I read all the emails that she got, and most of them are legitimate, they're not that harassing more than any other politician would get. I mean, I'm sure Trump gets some harassing emails, but anyway, I have more to say, but I guess we'll have to come back to more meetings until this is all resolved. I have so much more to say, but this is-
Up next is Leroy Truth Investigations.
Hello, Dictator Franco, Rachel Franco, what are we gonna do about you? What are we gonna do about you? Rachel Franco, Mayor, we the people of the United States of America have received allegations that you have allegedly committed a Class C felony for quid pro quo, which is punishable for up to ten years in prison. Mayor Franco, I'm gonna start at the end. What's your favorite color of prison attire? Now, just in case you are found guilty, let's plan ahead. Will it be orange, the timeless look for politicians who get caught? Brown to match the dirt that keeps getting shoveled in this town? Red for the heat of that subpoena spotlight? Rainbow for the full spectrum of all-inclusive corruption here, or maybe see-through, so the people of Groton can finally get a little transparency? But here's where it gets serious. A developer, Eric Goodman, testified under oath that you, Mayor Franco, offered him a quid pro quo, a development deal, if he silenced a man you didn't like on the historic district commission. That man, of course, is John Goodrich, right over there. Now before you start saying, oh, this out-of-towner's lying about me, he's harassing me, this is not speculation, that's sworn testimony, Dictator Franco. And if that allegation is true, it's not just unethical, it's a felony under Connecticut law. So right now, by a show of hands, how many of you will immediately open up an investigation against Dictator Mayor Stack? Show of hands.
Mayor Franco.
Mayor Franco, thank you. All right, well, I'm gonna make a phone call, it's a private phone call, do not listen to this. Hold on, do not listen, this is private. Hold on.
Hello. Thank you for calling the FBI. To continue this call, please-
I'll listen to how it goes.
Thank you, your time has expired.
God bless.
Up next is Michael Bouchet.
Mike Bouchet, sixteen, at the Town of Groton. I'm here tonight to talk about the City of Groton seawall cost overruns. What is the ten point eight million dollar figure given out by City Hall as the amount authorized for the seawall construction? First, that figure doesn't represent the full cost of the seawall replacement program. That amount is closer to fifteen million. The ten point eight million is the publicly known cost to date that has been appropriated to the construction company, Oborio, for their work on the seawall. Oborio costs only cover the construction of the seawall. In addition, there would be other significant costs related to the seawall, such as GZA, the engineering firm overseeing the seawall project, BL Companies, the firm which wrote up the original design and RFP for the seawall, Groton Utilities, City Highway Department, City Hall staff, and various other costs. Next is, what does the nine point eight million represent that in your community investment fund request? Basically, that's the total amount of money that the City of Groton's dream list for a bailout of the seawall project. And it's a shame for us that you pushed that forward and didn't allow the one counselor who actually cares about our neighborhoods, Portia, to ask some questions. This is an important mess that the city has put the town in, because the city's gonna claim this is a highway department project now. Those millions are coming back here. You guys should have done a much better job, especially you, Counselor Rusk. Okay, so that basically is gonna cover all the money that the city's been pulled out of, capital funds, they pulled out money from Groton Utilities, the sewer department, highway department, and probably other sources to put a band-aid together of this gaping financial hole that the city created. The most shocking, and I could read a bunch of mistakes with the RFP, but the most shocking, and I'd really like to know what BL Companies and GZA, the engineering company overseeing this whole firm, is before the bidding was completed on the project-
Thank you.
-due to the lack of bedrock, the companies asked-
Your time has expired.
-how are we supposed to anchor the seawall-
Your time has expired.
-when there's no bedrock in a boring sample? The answer given by the city was-
Your time has expired. Thank you.
Bedrock shall be assumed to be thirteen feet below grade.
Up next, for going on to consent calendar.
Serious mistake. One of you councils needs to do your job, and you ought to have people up here for two more minutes.
Mr. Bouchet, your time has expired.
If you can't let people speak for two minutes, you should not be running for office.
We cannot continue if you are gonna keep sleeping.
It is completely irresponsible, and I'm thankful that your time will soon be out, Mayor Franco.
Thank you, we're on a recess now.
Yeah. Break now.
Point of information? Are we in recess? Is that what you said?
I would also just like to point out that these guys are not-
We're back from recess. It is 6:59 PM, and we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Councillor Good, would you like to take that?
I move item number 2025-4-7 and 2025-919, the special trust fund contributions to accept.
Segen. Move by Good, segmented by Parker?
Parker.
Does anybody have any changes?
I just want to thank the staff that put it together. I think that the comments were, you know, much more evenly distributed this time, so I do appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, seeing no other hands, we're going to take a vote on the consent calendar as moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next is communication reports, other than committee reports. We're going to start with councillor Merritt. Do you have anything you would like to share?
No.
Thank you. Councillor Borderline?
Thank you. I just want to speak about what, you know, Ian Thomas, who is my husband, spoke about. He got a text message of a flyer about Community Speaks Out inviting a special appreciation party October 18th, 12 to 5, Groton Elks Club, and it says down here, please do not share this information with non-employees of Groton. I guess it's been canceled since then, from what I've heard, I guess through the mayor, through the town manager?
There was an email that you received.
I haven't caught up. I've been, I've worked today, I haven't got on.
No, there's been an email, you received it.
Okay, so has it been canceled?
Yes.
That's the rumor. So that's what he was referring to, is that, you know, this is an agency that just got a bunch of funds from us, and now they were having a gathering for town staff, not town councillors, town staff. And so that's what he was asking about, because we received it from an employee internally to us, because obviously we never got this. So I also went out speaking to the community on Judson Ave. A gentleman was out there mixing, mix and seal to seal a sidewalk up that he's been asking the town to fix for quite some time. I guess there was a flooding study done in that area. It's all uneven, and he said someone's going to get hurt, and he was out there sealing it. So I will forward the pictures I took along. I commend our citizen of our community for taking action and trying to seal up, which is really not his responsibility. I also, through the mayor, through the town manager, had received many concerns about the seawall. Have we had an update? I've asked several times for update. We've had never had the mayor of the city come back, sit before us, and have a thorough update, other than randomly, we're doing a state funding thing, and they were added, and we're going to try to get funding for the wall, and, you know, like, but there's been no formal discussion or update as the process has unfolded, and so that's very frustrating. I didn't raise my hand because it's already been a done issue, but when I asked by the auditors, would I support an investigation, I asked this council, if in fact, on the record, there was a concern with something being done wrong, we should bring it up. Mayor Franco asked, would someone, if you guys feel something was wrong, fine, investigate. I didn't get any support from anybody at the time, so I didn't want to talk about it again because it's considered a recycled issue, we're not supposed to speak again. But I do feel if this council feels that there's, I don't have the support up here. That there's something wrong, then file an internal investigation, go the process. But I'm one vote. I don't, I can't even get on a standing committee. And lastly, again, I say, as I continue and I plan to return in the next term, I feel I deserve to be on a standing committee. I've worked with councillor McBride on other committees, never had a problem. It was stated to me, the reason I have not been put on the standing committee is because all the other committee chairs did not want to work with me. Well, that's bullying, that's workforce harassment, that is unjust and unfair. Every day we go to work with people we may not break bread with or hang out after, but they have every right to be included. Time and time again, I show up here, Democratic Committee Caucus, I'm not invited.
Councillor Pacino, you're up next.
So, again, I ask this council.
Thank you, councillor Borderline. Your time has expired.
I'm sad that councillor Good chose to take a seat.
Councillor Borderline, your time has expired. You're out of order. You are out of order. You are out of order. We're taking another recess. It is 7:04. Thank you. We're back from recess, another recess at 7:07 PM. Okay, we're back from recess, another recess, at 7:07 PM. Councillor Pacino?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have nothing to pass.
Thank you. Councillor Rusk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had the honor of attending the Eastern Connecticut Chamber Military Appreciation Breakfast, put on by the Eastern Connecticut Chamber of Commerce. It was a very nice affair. I want to say thank you to all of our military in our region. It was really nice to be able to celebrate them for a morning. I also was able to attend a ribbon cutting at the Hilton Garden Inn. If you have been there before, they really upped their game. It looks beautiful. It was lovely before, I was surprised on how nice it looks now. So if you have a chance, definitely stop in there. It was a beautiful event. I also attended the Safe, oh, and I'm sorry, I attended that with councillor Parker. On Sunday, I attended the Safe Futures Walk with councillor Parker and councillor Jones. And for those of you who don't know, Safe Futures works with victims of domestic violence, but additionally, they do a lot of education about safe relationships. They help our police department here in the town, they help the city police department and police departments in the region, help victims of domestic violence and their families. And definitely an honor to walk there on Sunday. I want to say congratulations to Captain B. on 29 years of service. That is fantastic. Thank you for serving our community. I wanted to address parks in District Four. We, I want to start by saying thank you to the Board of Ed for moving forward with Mary Morrison. At least we're taking steps in that direction, and I'm excited about the possibility of a park there, as well as the military, or the military housing community being willing to allow parks in, or allow civilians in their parks. I continue to work with John Burt about a replacement paver for a vet over at our Veterans Wall. That is incorrect, so thank you to Mr. Burt, and thank you to town historian Jim Streeter for their work on that and addressing constituents' concern. And I also want to say thank you to Mr. Burt. I sent him a text really quick about a concern about an Arborvitie that was raised by a constituent. He was able to take a look at it, and that is moving forward. So thank you, Mr. Burt, for all of your hard work.
Thank you. Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is October, so October is filled with many, many events that we go to. I went to, I attended the Always Home event with Mayor Franco and councillor Parker on Friday. It was a very, very nice reception, and I learned a lot about Always Home, and we'll be following up with them on that. That was great. During the day, participated in the United Way Food Bank that we hold in the city, held by the city and United Way, with councillor Rusk, councillor Parker, councillor Good. And this time, we served 383 people. I think it's the largest group that we've ever served, and is evidence of the issues of hunger in our community. So it's always humbling to work that event and help people, but doesn't a lot, a lot of people. It was a busy weekend in walks. On Saturday, I walked the Terry Broder 10K Walk for Breast Cancer Foundation, and, which was well-attended and quite a, it was a great walk, and a little hot, but it went fine. And then on Sunday, did the Safe Futures Walk with councillor Parker and councillor Rusk on, for domestic violence, so that was also very good. And also, a thank you to Captain B. for his 29 years of service. The community should be very proud that we have police officers of his caliber, and I just want to thank him for everything that he's done, so.
Thank you. Councillor McBride?
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to give my thoughts and praise out to the Fleming family and their friends and the entire Groton School System for the unexpected passing of Chad Fleming. I attended last week the S.B. Butler Town Council Candidate Forum, where many town councillor candidates discuss their thoughts and views on the utilization of the S.B. Butler property with regards to future economic development. I also attended the Groton Heights Property Reuse Committee, where a final recommendation was made to the council for the reuse of Groton Heights. And on a positive note, I'd like to thank and congratulate the Fitch football team for their recent win against East Line, which made their record three and one. They're undefeated in ECC and they're fifth in the Class Double M. So best of luck on your next game against NFA. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Good?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've received a lot of letters from people in the S.B. Butler community, and I appreciate all of them. I also attended the forum and meet the candidates. Talk we had, it went, I think, pretty well. I think a lot of people had some misconceptions cleared up by the end of that meeting, hopefully. And also, I went on the Stonington and Groton Cleanup Day, held by the Chamber of Commerce. And we picked up many garbages, many bags of garbage on Fort Hill, but that's it. Thanks.
Councillor Parker?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillor Rusk and councillor Jones said a couple of things I've attended. I also attended the Eastern Connecticut Symphony Orchestra event. It's their 79th year putting on the concert, which was a beautiful event. Met the new director and a couple others, and the president of the board. So it was nice to stop by and support the guard and, stop by the election event forum, information session, I'll say. And I want to thank Clerk Melendez for her being, for her being there and doing a wonderful job and answering questions and everything. TVCCA, I've attended the Groton Heights Property Reuse Committee, as councillor McBride mentioned. This month is Breast Cancer Awareness Month and Domestic Violence. I think, I want to thank people who came out to support Safe Futures. It's near and dear to my heart, as well as the cancer, even though I couldn't attend that one. Thank you for always supporting the community, to everyone. Captain B., congratulations. You will be missed. All that knowledge, and good luck. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I'm going to keep it very short. I send condolences to Mr. Fleming's family, to the Groton School District. It is a great loss for our community as a whole, and I send my sincere condolences. I also would like to say congratulations to Captain B. I thank you for all that you have done for our community and your longstanding service. Congratulations on your retirement, and you will be missed. And I have always appreciated your emails that would alert us to weather events in our community. That was something I always looked forward to when we had some kind of weather coming forward. So we're going to be moving on to clerk of the council. There's no more, we've already had our time. Do you have a point of information?
I was going to ask a question.
Do you have a point of information? Thank you. Clerk Melendez?
Can you refer to page nine of your packet? The, the August meeting minutes were approved with an amendment, and after reviewing the recording, that actually happened at the July 22nd Cow meeting, so the August minutes were not changed.
All right, nine of our packet, or page nine?
Nine in your packet.
Okay.
For the September.
So this September should be saying August, is that what you're saying?
So the September meeting, there was an amendment for the August minutes.
Okay.
And so I went back and I reviewed the recordings, and that actually happened at the July 22nd Cow and not at the August meeting. So I did not go back and change the August minutes.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
And then, election, November 4th. All the information about the election day, early voting, absentee ballot can be found on the Groton website and the Facebook page.
Thank you. Point of information?
Yeah.
Can we state the election polling times and what times the early voting and absentee ballots process?
Sure. So election day will be at your polling place from 8:00 AM to, excuse me, 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Early voting is October 20th through November 2nd, at the Register of Voters, which is located at 61 Fort Hill Road. That will be at 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, with the exception of October 28th and the 30th, which is 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Absentee ballots?
Just go to the clerk's office.
The date that they start, sorry. When can they get them, and when's the last day they can apply?
They went out, they started going out October 3rd.
And is there an end date on those? They can get same-day absentee ballots? Thank you.
Clerk of the representative town meeting?
Okay, their next meeting is tomorrow, October 8th, at 7:00 PM at Thrive 55. And for vacancies, District One has one Democratic seat, District Three has one Republican seat, and District Four has one Democratic and two minority representation seats. Nothing else to report.
Thank you. Up next, chairman and treburt.
Good evening. First, I just wanted to make a correction to something I said at the last council meeting, at the September 2nd council meeting. A comment had been made during public comment concerning me having sent 300 emails, over 300 emails, to Mr. Eric Goodman as chair of the HDC criticizing a member of the HDC that was determined, the examiner actually didn't say there was any criticism, there was no criticism, there was no criticism involved, and it was not 300. However, I had said that Mr. Goodman said there was over 300 emails. What actually had happened was, he did a snapshot of a quick search in his email system, sent just the snapshot of the search to the examiner, and they reported on it. So he didn't say anything, he just provided a snapshot. So I just wanted to... So, I just want to make it clear, he didn't say there was over 300 because we were finding internally there was less than 200 and they were just standard business of the HDC. So, I just wanted to apologize to Mr. Goodman for incorrectly stating that. Athletic fields were all set for November 4th. Everybody should have the explanatory text. That's the only official document to be released on behalf of the Town or Athletic Field Task Force. That's been approved by the town attorneys. It's important, your official capacities, that you not support or do pro for the referendum because there are rules on that. You have to stay neutral and when you're representing the town, so, otherwise, I could interfere with the results of the referendum. Bicycle pump track, it's open, but the actual ribbon cutting is this Saturday from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. It looks great out there, already getting a lot of use. Let's see, District 4, Counsel Rusk had already mentioned that, so I was going to mention that, but I won't now. I can't remember if I, I believe I've mentioned before that we did get bids in for the Quaker Farm Road Bridge. We received three bids within, within our budget, so we anticipate that we'll be able to move forward with that, which is great because you never know nowadays how the bids are going to come in. Let's see. I was asked by Counselor Jones about the veterans position we talked about prior. As a reminder, Counselor Jones and Counselor Pacino and I have visited summers. They have a robust program there. And if you may recall, they were looking at ramping up their program and getting into a new building. We had asked, well, is there possibly we could just contract for services? So, I've reached out to, I'm sorry, David Caffrey there to ask if there's any progress on that, so I'll report back when I hear. I did attend the Military Appreciation Breakfast, which is fantastic, as well as the Hilton Garden and ribbon cutting. Terms of the spitting complaint, we do not keep cameras in here going at all times. There's no way for us to tell, looking at the footage, is what happened, if anything. So, it's just, it's indeterminable, so. The cameras didn't come on until, I think, 4:00, 3:30, 4:00 o'clock-ish. There's a new system, there's no timestamps. It looks like, from what IT thinks, there was probably three people in the room and the camera came on and they were not town people, but we can't tell for sure. So, you can't tell what's going on, but, so it's incorrect to say that nothing happened. There's just no way to tell. I also want to thank Captain B for all his service and look forward to, the mayor will be reading the proclamation at the Elks Club Police Appreciation Dinner Friday night. And then, touching, I was asked about the employee luncheon and I know something went to the, was copied to the council last week, but I thought they had before earlier, but apparently not. That was for city-town end, for Groton Lawn, not just the town. Of course, Joe Dela Cruz serves on our Economic Development Commission, former state rep, former town counselor. He was trying to do a nice thing for all the employees of all the local municipalities here, or municipal agencies. And he was working with, for some of the people involved in EDC and to do donations and it was going to be fully donated funds to do it. So, it was a nice effort and I don't intend to talk further about it because it was a nice effort. And that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Burt along.
Any updates on the seawall?
Nothing for me. You may have seen, I don't know if everybody saw, there was an article in Examiner today. I think it was, it was yesterday. I can't remember now. Time flies, yesterday or today. I think it was today. But, there was, by the way, there was one mistake in it, it said, "We received a grant from the state for the seawall." That's not correct. It was the city, not the town. But, at this point, the city has asked for us to apply for another grant, so at this point, there's nothing, no action for the town.
And then, lastly, is there any effort to bring the city mayor here to discuss? I mean, we haven't had any formal updates from anybody from the city.
Well, that's up to the council if they want to. It's been brought before, there's not been anything brought forward.
I guess they haven't asked for any money, so there was no need to bring them forward. This is a municipal situation that they are dealing with and from the article I've read, they have paid for it themselves and they have not asked the town for any money, so.
Did they do ARPA money?
There was some ARPA money.
Right, so we should be, we're invested to know what's going on.
Well, they haven't asked for any more money, so it hasn't come to us. Unless you want to ask them to come to us and ask for money.
I did not ask that.
But, that's what would probably happen. If we invite them here, they reply, "Ask for money." Is that what?
They're probably going to anyway at this point, but the point is, there should be an update and we should, if the council wants an update. And I asked for a motion for that and I didn't get the support before.
I don't think we get, we need an update on this. We don't usually typically get updates on other issues that we give money towards, to, for their roads.
We're fully responsible because of roads, so.
Right, we give them money for roads, but we do not usually do file ups.
Counselor Parker.
We are now deviating from what the agenda is.
You are correct. So, can we get back on target, please?
You are very correct.
Thank you.
I take your, I take note of that. Thank you. Mr. Burt, I had heard that for S.B. Butler, that there was possible zoning change that had been done there. Is that accurate?
Not since 1965, when it used to be zoning there used to be under the Mystic Fire Department then. As you know, for instance, I think it's knowing, the fire department has their own zoning, Mystic used to, they turned that zoning over to the town, I think in the 50s, late 50s, 57, if I'm not mistaken. And since it was changed in 65, there's been no changes and it's still RS 12.
Right, and as far as you know, is there anything coming forward in the future here? Like, anything pending?
No, there's nothing pending.
Nothing that you know of. Thank you. Thank you for covering the recording in the chamber. Let's see, all right, that's it. And we're moving on to Committee of the Whole. I have nothing to share at this time. Personal and Appointments, Chair Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We will be bringing forward, are we bringing forward the reappointments in new business? Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Parker.
No meeting.
I'm sorry, did you, I meant to say Counselor Burt along, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Through the mayor, through the chair, Counselor Jones, is there, it was brought to my attention that Goodrich's application didn't move forward again. Is that true or what, where do we stand on?
There was no application for this personal application.
And is there any update on Pritchard? Where does that stand for replacement on that? Are we fully full for planning and zoning?
Planning and zoning, bring something forward and we'll deal with it.
I'm asking her, are we, is there any vacant seats right now?
That would be the clerk, she would know about vacant seats.
Oh, I didn't know because you guys would communicate. Usually, the chair of the personal appointments knows like what seats are available, that's why I was asking, so.
And you were asking about planning and zoning?
Yeah, just, if you have them all, it'd be great to know where the vacancies are while we're on the topic and is there any applications in?
There's two vacancies for alternate and planning and zoning.
Two vacancies for alternates?
Mm-hmm.
And anything else anywhere else?
Like on all committees?
I mean, I, we're talking about personal appointments and I was looking for an update of vacant seats. If the chair doesn't have it, we defer to the town clerk, so I guess.
Do you want her to go through every, I'm asking, do you want her to go through every committee?
I think it is because I think people have been asking and so I said I'd ask if anything.
But there, I just want to, because it might take her some time, there is a list on the website that shows every vacant position. Is that correct?
On the website and the town register has all the vacancies.
And there's not many to go through?
There's the, there is some, yeah.
I think it'd be great to just name them.
Madam Mayor, I believe we're just only doing our committee reports at this time?
Right, but this is the time where people can ask the chair questions, so I don't think we should go to the clerk at the moment to go through the whole list, but if you had a quick question on certain things.
No, it's fine. I guess, I mean, I think it would be good, maybe I can ask, if possible, maybe to, because some people don't watch all that stuff, so it'd be great to add that maybe to the clerk's report when we have it once a month, just add vacant seats as part of it, as a report. It'd be really helpful. Yeah, just, they used to do it in the past, it would be nice to just have it on the record. And I guess, okay, so the personal appointment, is there any other business that's coming forward of applications that you guys are currently waiting to approve for any positions?
When the town sends us the list for the October, then we'll deal with it.
So, you don't have any now?
I wait for the town to submit their agenda to me. I don't have discussions beforehand.
When I'm asking?
The town submits the list, then we act on it.
Okay, so there's no, all applications that have come to you have been reviewed?
The applications go to the clerk.
Right, but then they go to the.
In a packet.
Correct, so that packet, there's none pending is all I'm asking.
The packet, the meeting will be on October 21st, so we'll get the packet on October 21st.
Before 21st?
Yeah, 20th, something like that.
Okay. Thank you.
Up next, Rules. Chair Parker.
No meeting, no report.
I have it.
Counselor Burt along.
I just wanted to check the status of my referral to talk about the time limit on public comments.
There's no actual referral. I didn't get, I don't have actually writing or, I don't have it.
You never got the referral? Town Manager Burt, did you get it?
Did you, can, may I?
Maybe didn't get the support?
Did you get the support for two? Did we get an actual email, so I have not received that?
I don't know if it was through the town.
Mr. Burt is looking, just a moment, Mr. Burt will be looking.
I believe the council did receive them, let me, I'll check.
Let him check.
I don't remember that coming through because I would have had a meeting if it did. Won't happen now. I don't. There was no email. She said it as a meeting, so.
Oh, okay.
Then it wasn't submitted.
People talking in the audience, please?
I'm sorry, can we keep it down in the galley, please? Thank you.
So, it was received.
Did you send an email?
Yeah, I'll check. I have my computer here in between while we're talking. I'll look to make sure it's sent, but I'll send it again.
You can't use your computer during our meetings.
I am allowed to read on my email. I went through this, I dropped off a medical letter. That's how I read if I need to and I talked to the town manager about it.
Yeah, but we, we're not allowed to go through our communications during our meetings.
I'm not allowed to respond if you read the rule correctly.
No, we don't go through our.
Town Manager Burt?
I asked for your guidance on that. I'm not allowed to send out communications, but I can read. Is that correct?
I would have to consult the town council rules.
All right, so let's take a rule on that because I've asked this many times. Can I bring up my computer every week since then after I brought my doctor's note due to my disability? I bring up old documents when we're discussing things, I read.
All right, we're not on that topic at the moment. We are on the rules of Chair Parker. You said you were going to check your emails and I'm trying to tell you, none of us are supposed to be on our electronics. We'd be checking our emails during our meeting.
I was told that we're not allowed to communicate. Reading only is different than communicating.
Thank you, but that is not the topic on the floor. Thank you. Let's move on, please.
So, I'd like to put that on the floor, ask through the mayor to read, to reread that ruling because I did submit a letter of a doctor's note and an agreement that I could use my device to read on here. I'm not sending out messages, I can use it for recall.
I've got the wording for it.
Would you like to?
During any council or committee session, no council shall send to or receive from any person any communication pertaining to an agenda item or item under discussion by way of electronic communications, including instant messaging via any platform, email or text.
So, it states basically you cannot go into your emails or any communications while the meeting is going on. Is that correct?
Does not say that.
I would, I define it as being an agenda item. I don't, I think it's a little more particular than that.
Thank you.
So, what's the ruling?
I would advise at this time that we just, if you would like to look up your referral, you do it on your time and not during the council's time and you can follow up with that after the meeting. That's how my advice on this matter.
I've been reading my emails every week.
The rest of us don't have access to our emails during the meeting.
That's your choice.
No, it's not a choice.
Every other council uses.
We're not going to debate this at the time. This is not an agenda item. This is not.
So, through the mayor and the town manager, I gave you the letter, I showed you the letter from my doctor and after you guys said this and I said I was using it for read only, like, sometimes I can't see the paper, I read my agenda.
Read only agenda, yes.
So, I can read the agenda, I can read anything, as long as I'm not sending messages.
We're not going to have a debate. This is not on our agenda.
I feel so unfair, I think it should be ruled.
This is not on our agenda.
I think it should be ruled on. Because it does not say.
I'm now calling you out of order. I'm calling you out of order. Madam Mayor, can we recess, please?
Yeah, you can take a recess. Let's take a recess.
You are out of order.
Let's take a recess.
And we'll take another recess at 7:35. And we'll take another recess at 7:35.
Perfect.
Alright, it is 7:40. We're back from recess. Alright. Your question.
Yeah, I just wanted to state, I sent it again. Town Manager Burt just said he received it, so I asked the support of the council to review, once you, once Counselor Parker receives it, to consider reinstating the time restraints for the local people here. So that's what I asked.
Point of information?
Your question.
Didn't we just try to have a motion for it to happen this evening? And once we make a decision on something, it cannot be brought up unless it's two-thirds vote or 12 months later. So we just, there was a motion, potential motion made this evening to have that re-looked at.
I had no support. Thank you.
Wait, what, can you...
Up next is public safety.
I'm sorry that you're bothered by my voice, but I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
Excuse me, you need to, please stop.
Um, I ask that you, your decorum is...
Decorum, and the wordings that you are using, please.
Your decorum, when you sigh when I speak, is hurtful, and I ask for you to stop.
I believe that you...
Point of order, I believe I have the floor at the moment.
Your, your, your point of order.
Um, I believe you said public safety, which means we're moving on?
We are moving on, thank you.
And you're allowed to ask a point of clarification, because they had a discussion.
Councilor Bordeley, you do not have the floor. I do not recognize you at this time. You do not have the floor.
She's not to repeat, that's fine.
You do not have the floor. You're out of order.
Thank you. And I ask you to stop with your body, what is your decorum?
You are out of order.
And I ask for you to stop with your body.
You're out of order. We're going to take another recess. It's 7:42. We'll have another five-minute recess.
Thank you.
Alright, we're back from recess at 7:47. We are moving on to public safety. Chair Rusk.
No meeting, no report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of information?
I will not recognize your point of information. I have called you out of order, and under the committee reports, you have no time remaining now. New business. Up first is 2025-856-1, various appointments, reappointments, September resolution. This is in our packet on page 17. This is going to be Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 2025-856, various appointments, reappointments. Resolution making the following appointments, reappointments to authorize agencies, authorities, boards, commissions, and committees resolve that the town council appoint the following individuals to authorize ABCs as noted. Reappointment for alternate Bruce McDermott for zoning board of appeals, reappointment for full for Mark Oppinger for retirement board, reappointment full for Jason Pollard for retirement board, reappointment full for Mike DeFranco for Parks and Recreation Commission, reappointment full for Maria Shaw for library board, reappointment full for Barbara Nagy, library board, reappointment full for Mary Comrie for library board, reappointment full for Yunez Stephan for inland waters, wet, I'm sorry, inland wetlands agency, reappointment full for Barbara Block, inland wetlands agency, reappointment full for Barbara Williams, inland wetlands agency, and appointment full for Tom Kelleher.
Timothy.
Kohler, maybe Kohler, Historic District Commission. So moved?
Second.
Moved by Jones, seconded by, good. Your point of information?
I think the last one is Timothy, not Thomas.
Okay, Timothy.
Timothy. Thank you.
Thank you, as written. Thank you. Counselor Bordeley.
Um, again, I ask, there is no other applications to any of the other boards and commissions that were considered under this round?
No other applications.
Thank you.
Alright, seeing no other hands, we're going to take a vote on 2025-856-1, various appointments, reappointments, September resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next, 2025-821-1, community tree management plan. This is in our packet on page 18. Counselor McBride, would you like to take that one?
Sure. 2025-821, community tree management plan resolution. Like to move forward with the resolution adopting the 2025 community tree management plan, whereas the town of Groton engaged U.S. to conduct a street tree inventory and community tree management plan, and whereas the 2025 community tree management plan contained a number of recommendations that will enhance the health and diversity of the community tree canopy, and whereas this plan is a crucial planning resource for the planning, public works, and parks and recreation departments, now therefore be it resolved that the town, the Groton Town Council adopt the 2025 community tree manager plan to be used as the guiding document for the town to improve community connectivity.
Second. Moved by McBride, seconded by Rusk. Counselor Bordeley.
Uh, thank you. This is definitely something that's very important to me for the town. I think it is a great opportunity. I'm happy to see that when this was originally started, the city was not part of the funding, and now they are, but the, but the survey did not include all the city. You know, so I, I'm hoping maybe the city will do their own surveying and come up with a different plan of their trees, and, but I am happy, I just hope in the future that if they're going to be part of the funding, that there should be some, you know, investment earlier on to, like, make sure we're also surveying that. So I guess through the, through the ma, through the mayor, through the town manager, is there a way that we can ask earlier if the city wants to get involved with this, so that maybe this, the trees could be surveyed as part of this whole package?
The city had already did their own plan. There was an article in Examiner where Keith Hedrick, Mayor Hedrick, had updated them that they actually have a plan. There was no need for them to participate.
So there wasn't a need, and their plan is separate, so they didn't have to be part of the plan for the funding?
They didn't, yeah, they weren't part of our funding, right.
Aren't we giving them some money to be used for...
I don't believe so, not that I know of.
That's what I thought we discussed. Maybe I'm, I thought that they would have to follow the same, maybe I'm mixing up the two. I'll correct myself if I have to. I thought that there was some understanding that they would be part of a portion of the funding for the city side? No? So this funding is strictly for the town? Preparation for trees?
Yes.
Alright, thank you.
As far as I know, that's what I believe.
We don't, so we're not 100%?
99.9%.
Okay, because I'm just a little unclear. I might be.
I could let you know.
It was a little unclear as to if the trees fall under a, like, could GLP as well as Monmouth Cove, like, could other areas take part in all of this?
Really, that's more for Mark Berry to answer in the future. That's not, I don't feel prepared to answer that question.
Can you just get that back to us then, when you get a chance?
Well, I think it'll depend on what we're using for funding in the future, what method we're doing. I don't think, I think it's a moot point at this time, so I don't really have an answer to give in the future until we get to that point again.
So there's no update to tell?
We will certainly keep it in mind when it comes back around.
So you have no update of how the funds can be used throughout all the subdivisions? You can't look into that and get back to us, or me?
I think that the motion on the floor is to accept the management tree plan.
Right, and I'm just asking...
That has nothing to do with any funding whatsoever. This is a, excuse me, I'm speaking, thank you. It's a resolve that the Groton Town Council adopt the 2025 community tree management plan to be used as a guiding document for the town to impose community connectivity. This has nothing at all to do with a grant.
But I'm asking, is this plan include the city?
No, this is the plan we received at our committee of the whole, and it was just the town.
Okay, so there's no, and is it...
And it has nothing to do with any grant.
And is it including the subdivisions?
I don't recall the subdivisions. I mean, there was a, an overlay of some items, but this is the town's tree management plan.
Okay, and, okay, so if we're not, the city has their own, and so that's why we're not including them in this. Okay, thank you.
Alright, seeing no other hands, we're going to take a vote on 2025-821-1, community tree management plan resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. Up next, 2025-810-1, naming of pickleball courts resolution. Counselor Rusk, would you like to take this one?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Item 2025-810, naming of the pickleball courts, resolution approving the name of the pickleball courts. Resolve that the town council approve the naming of the pickleball courts to be named Bassie Pickleball Court.
Second. Moved by Rusk, seconded by Bordeley. Counselor Bordeley.
I think this is great, and I just want to thank for all the hard work. And I just ask again, I ask for decorum again down here. So I guess point of order.
What's your point of order?
I just would appreciate the loud gaping exhaustion of me talking, and...
What is your point of order?
Asking for respect.
That's not, just asking for respect, what is the issue?
The loud gasping exhaustion that I'm talking.
Breathing?
Not breathing, literally rolling his eyes and, like, sighing with disgust.
I, I didn't hear it, and I didn't see it.
That's fine. I, you want to watch the tape, I'm sure it will be on there, but again, I ask...
Can we move on?
I ask that it stops. Thank you. I find it to be rude. Um, again, I was just stating that I just think this is a great opportunity, and I'm excited and want to thank all the hard work and dedication to the pickleball community that they have been doing and helping the Groton Parks and Rec, so this is a good honor.
Seeing no other hands, we're going to take a vote on 2025-810-1, naming of the pickleball courts resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. We are now on to... Before we move on, I just want to let everybody at home know that we're not just passing these. These have all been fully discussed, debated in our committee of the whole meetings, where these have passed, they are to make it to the town council so we can finalize them. Just so people understand that we are not just voting on these without having a full debate. Up next is 2025-875-1, police station chiller unit resolution. This is on page 20. Counselor Pacino, would you like to take that one?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Item 2025-875, police chiller unit resolution, funding and replacement for air-conditioned chiller unit at the police station. Resolve, be resolved that the town council authorizes the use of $500,000 in capital reserve funds to pay for the replacement of the chiller unit at the police station, and refer the item, refer to the RTM per rule 5.6, I'm sorry, per rule 6.5.3.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Pacino, seconded by Parker. Counselor McBride.
Yeah, thank you. I just had a quick question for Town Manager Burt, for the mayor. I don't have my notes, but what do we have in the remaining capital reserve fund as of now?
The, the current report I received said a little over $4 million. I think it's less than that. I think someone's tied up. I think it's closer to two to two and a half, but it's somewhere within there.
Okay.
But the finance director did review and say she was comfortable with the expenditure.
Thank you, that was all.
Alright, seeing no hands, we're going to take a vote on 2025-875-1, police station chiller unit resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Opposed? Abstentions. Passes nine to zero to zero. Up next, we have 2025-874-1, Human Services Assistance Fund Allocation. This is on page 21 of our packet. Councillor Merritt, would you like to take that one?
2025-874, Human Services Assistant Fund Allocation Resolution. Whereas the town council and RTM approved $23,500 in the Human Services Assistant Fund, number 7360, in the FYE 2026 budget, and whereas the Human Services Assistant Fund may be used to assist those in the community in need of assistance with basic human needs, including but not limited to rent, transportation, expenses, utility bills, and fuel costs, whereas the request for assistance has increased substantially over pre-COVID years, resulting in the depletion of budgeted funds. And whereas during the process of setting the FYE 2026 budget, the town council directed the town manager and the human services director to return to request further funds should, to request further funds should be budgeted, should be the budgeted amount, be insufficient to cover existing needs. Now therefore be it resolved that the town council approves an additional $75,000 out of the general fund contingency fund to the Human Services Assistant Fund, number 7360, and be it further resolved that the request for additional funding be sent to the representative town meeting per RTM Rule 6.5.3.
Second.
Moved by Merritt.
Also moved.
Thank you. Moved by Merritt, seconded by Rusk. Seeing no hands, we're going to take a vote on 2025-874-1, Human Services Assistance Fund Allocation Resolution. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. That passes nine to zero to zero. Just to note a note here, that was five items on our agenda, and miraculously, that was unanimously voted on by all of us. So we have a motion to adjourn by Russ.
Second.
Second by Portelin. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions. That also passes nine to zero to zero.
What time?
Time. And it is 8:03 PM.